Anyone here for Board of Review? Anyone here for Board of Review on Truth and Taxation? All right, we've had our meeting and we've just been waiting until 6:30 to adjourn. So we've got about a half a minute left and then we can adjourn for the Board of Review. Anybody want to move to approve or to?
I'll move to.
Adjourn?
Adjourn. Close.
We can close it.
Close it.
The Board of Review.
I'll second that.
Further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Board of Review for 2023 is closed. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
All right, it is 6:30. We can, Fudge of Allegiance for the City Council Meeting.
Fudge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good evening. Is there anyone here for public input? Anyone here for public input? Anyone here for public input? Review and approve council agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously. Consent agenda items. Item A, approve three 2023 council meeting minutes. Item B, approve temporary liquor license and fee waiver for family fun fest. Item C, approve resolution accepting donations to the city. And item D, approve seasonal worker list.
Move to approve. Oh, you want to pull?
I'll second it.
Okay, further discussion.
You have what was donated.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's in there.
Yeah.
Do you want me to?
It was another.
Want to look at it? I can pull it up here.
Another, yeah.
Here it is, right here, Mike.
There it is, Mike.
Yep, there it is.
Some businesses, some residents.
All right, got a motion in a second. Any other discussion?
Did you want me to leave that out, Mike? I'm sorry if I.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously. Regular agenda items, Coratel Hotel license. John, is that you or where's Mitch? Is that John or Mitch?
That's neither.
That's me. That's Paul.
Yeah.
Well, I was gonna see who had the real knowledge. Now I know.
Yeah, the wild card indeed. The, this is an issue for the council's consideration. It's a license application. We have it listed as a resubmission by the Coratel Hotel. Just by way of background, as the council is well aware, hotels operating within the city of Wake Park are subject to licensing requirements under Local Ordinance 105. It is unlawful for a lodging establishment, a hotel, or a motel to operate without a valid license from the city of Wake Park based on our ordinance 105. In the staff report that was provided to the council, you will see that I've included in here factors to be considered for an application of a license. There's a set of five factors, A through F. Those are in the ordinance itself. While the council is looking over that, I also note that we have a clarification as to what the requirements are for a hotel, motel, a lodging establishment, any such business, for what they have to do to be considered within the minimum standards of operation for the Wake Park ordinance. That's that next section that has items A through N, all of which also appear in our ordinance. Rather than going through those individually and itemized just now, I think it's a better use of time for me to just provide a little bit of reminder of the background of this particular property, both because we have instances that go back to 2019 in the council agenda minutes, which are worth reviewing. And of course, we have new members of the council since the last time that actions related to the Coratel were taken. The council will recall that December of 2022, the council had before it as an issue whether to renew the license for the Coratel business, which is located at 815 First Street South in Wake Park. At that time, the council determined that it would not renew the license for Coratel on the grounds that were raised in reports that were provided at that meeting from the Wake Park Building Inspections Department, the Wake Park Police Department, and then we also had comment from the owners of the Coratel addressing those same issues. At that time, the council's primary items that were focused on and as appear in the minutes are there were concerns about the quantity and type of nuisance-related calls and complaints that had been received by the city police. And here in the staff agenda, you'll see I have a notation for you to a relevant section of our ordinance that pertains to that issue. Another item that was of concern for the council was information that was made available to the city regarding the use of the Coratel as a permanent residence. Members of the council who were seated in December most likely recall that, but I'd just point out for new members of the council that the city of Wake Park became aware that there was at least one individual who had declared the Coratel as their primary residence for purposes of voting. When that took place, that led to some inquiry into how did somebody establish the hotel as a residence? And some additional information was provided through the Wake Park Police Department and through representatives of the Coratel itself that they had individuals who had been staying for long periods of time and that they were aware of that. We did not go into any discussion of who those people are specifically. Members of the council may recall that we wanted to point out that the real issue here is about the hotel and not about individuals who may not understand what our ordinance requires or may not have understood what they were doing by listing the hotel as a permanent residence. We weren't interested in kicking up any kind of dust with respect to the specific persons, but we did have sufficient information provided to the council that there were, in fact, people who, for all intents and purposes, were living at the Coratel. Then there was also an issue for the council, which was non-compliance with conditions that were previously placed on Coratel by the city of Wake Park pursuant to recommendations that were issued after the property was inspected for violations of the fire code and the building code. Those are kind of the three general topic areas at the December meeting. We did have representatives of the Coratel present at that meeting of the council and they were provided an opportunity to discuss the Coratel, what the real situation was at the hotel, if they wanted to clarify anything. That information was available. I believe we have some of that recorded in the minutes from that council meeting. But the owners of the Coratel subsequently approached city staff after that meeting when the decision was made not to renew the license. The impact of that was that they were not able to continue operations, but the Coratel was, at a minimum, capable of putting in a new license. They could essentially deal with the issues that were identified, resubmit an application for consideration by the council. But there was a disruption in the period of time where it was operating as a hotel. It was until, through to now, it has not operated as a hotel because it does not have a license to operate. So after the council meeting in December of 2022, there were discussions between city staff and members of Coratel about returning with a new license application and what would be necessary for the Coratel to acquire a new license. One thing that I want to stress about those conversations is that city staff, of course, cannot themselves guarantee a license. They engaged in conversation with Coratel about things that could be presented to the council with a new submission for a license, but there were no conditions that were offered as if you do X, then the council will approve a license because obviously that's outside of what city staff are able to do. A reason that I'm emphasizing that is because the materials that were presented to the city by Coratel, which are in the agenda packets that you have, include a set of three pages. So there's the standard application and there's three additional pages. Those additional pages, let me see what they were listed as. In your agenda, they should be the Coratel Operations Council Meeting Info dot PDF. So the third one down in the list of the links there, if you want to take a look at those. But that was, that was a document that was prepared by Coratel. It was not requested or required by city staff. And you'll see that in the list there, there are indications about discussions that would take place with building inspections. They, they reached, they identify Mitch Howell, but the point of that being conversations with building inspections. My understanding is that this was a proposal by Coratel of we would like to have meetings with you or some version of we'd like to reach out and set these. This was not a idea that building inspections produced and said, we want you to do this. If you want more clarification about that, Mitch is here and after I've finished my overview, I think he'll be able to address anything you'd like. But I just want to point out that we did not create any you must do XYZ. So when you're reading these materials, these are presented by Coratel, their ideas on what it is that they would do as part of this license renewal. Or, you know, really, they're looking for a license. The renewal would be consecutive. I apologize for that. But there were some meetings that took place with Coratel. Now, I'd like to bounce back just a little bit, go into the history of Coratel. The council, really, I'm only gonna go back to 2019. That's, that's, I think, the relevant time period. So the council recall that this property had been subject to past council meetings. In June of 2019, the council made the decision to revoke the license for Coratel for 90 days and a nine-month probationary period was imposed. During that nine-month probationary period, the obligation for Coratel was that they would make themselves available for inspections by the Stearns County Health Department, the Wake Park Building Inspections Department, the Wake Park Police Department. Those inspections and the costs that were associated with them, those were assessed to the property owner. The decision really arose from kind of a confluence of different issues that had been identified at Coratel that the council felt required some more detailed oversight from the previously mentioned bodies, the Public Health Police Department works or building inspections, excuse me. So during that nine-month period, there were those inspections that took place to look to issues like hygiene code violations and bringing the place into compliance with the expectations of Wake Park for a business of this type. The Wake Park building official then followed up with the council at the January 2020 meeting. There's excerpts in your packet from that meeting with the agenda minutes and the discussion there. But essentially, updates were given to the council about the status of the repairs and recommendations from the perspective of the building inspector regarding the minimum prerequisites to reopen the facility. You'll see that in the minutes from that meeting, the council disapproved reopening the property at that time in particular because the West Building had not been addressed to the satisfaction of the council. Council advised that it wanted a plan for either demolishing that building or how to get that building up to usable standards. There were issues with the building conditions that either needed to be resolved or a plan for the building to be demolished. The property then came back before the council a month after that, February of 2020. And again, this is material in your packet. But the Wake Park building official in the February meeting submitted a staff report to the council addressing all the work that had been completed up to date. According to the representations from ownership of the property, cost constraints and other difficulties for them made demolition of the West Building non-viable at that time and they instead pursued renovations and presented a degree of a plan to the building inspector on how they would finish their renovations. Then, of course, in our last meeting, the December of 2022 meeting, one of the questions that was raised at that time was about the West Building, if it was being used or not. The West Building was not in use as our understanding. It was shuttered at that time. So now with the current application, Coratel has provided information regarding plans for the future operation of the hotel. They give you a set of bullets. I believe that there's 13 in the count of recommendations, ideas, policies that they might be undertaking for the operation of the hotel. There is a copy of that with you. There's a highlight here that city staff would note with respect to item 10, that the monthly meeting discussed therein is a proposal by Coratel, not a condition imposed by the Wake Park Building Inspector. I already touched on it, but this is, this is the reason why I wanted to emphasize that is that this is not a item that Wake Park has suggested, imposed, or required. This is a proposal from Coratel. You'll note that in the packet of information, the three pages that were provided by Coratel, they indicate that with respect to the West Building, that they will either consider demolishing the West Building in the future and converting it to parking or there was an indication that they would try to get it open and in compliance with fire and health codes to use that structure. To my knowledge, there have been no plans, bids, estimates, or other documentation regarding a proposed demolition of the West Building. This is the only information that we have is the comment in the packet. So the issue that sits before the council, of course, is whether or not to renew the license. As I indicated earlier, if there's questions for building inspections, I know that Mitch can give a little clarity because I was not a part of all conversations with Coratel, but I have had conversations with city staff. My understanding is that there was no, as I've already said, requisites that were imposed on them. But it might be useful to the council to get input from building inspections and then, of course, we have representatives from the Coratel here as well.
All right. Mitch, you got anything to add to that?
Hi, I'm Mitch Howell, one of the building officials. Regarding the Coratel, as far from a code compliance standpoint, we did a walkthrough after last week's meeting. That's where item 10 kind of popped up. It was more of a discussion, just looking at items that might benefit their operations. But as far as code compliance on the buildings go, besides one window that was replaced and, and one of the units where I believe it was the family was staying in, they replaced that window. I need to get an invoice based on that window to see if we actually can. It, it looks a little small for egress as far as hotel standards go, but without the invoice and approval, I just want to see what we got going on. Anything else as far as code compliance? I don't see an issue.
I mean, they had all kinds of code problems.
Yep.
All of that's been cleared up, cleaned up.
Yep, so the fire extinguishers and fire alarm system was serviced and inspected. Summit was out there. As far as any of the existing fire hazards that come with longevity of, or extended stay type occupants, those weren't an issue because it was vacant. So without having people in there, it's pretty, pretty compliant.
All right, thanks. Council, you got any questions for Mitch? Hear from the owners? You have anything to say?
Well, I'm here if you, if I'm. First of all, how's your health? I heard you had medical issue.
Yeah, you probably gave it to me, huh?
I had one. Yep, I mean, I'm here. We got everything there. Everything is compliant, like you said. We had them walk through and we also have a state fire marshal coming on 25th again to make sure. And the other building, there was only had a little water leak. On the thing, it says the water break, main water break, but it wasn't main water break. It was a leak, but it was before, between the main line and the, before my water meter. So we had to call the city to turn the water off. It was just dripping and there was a drain right there. So it's not like the whole building got condemned or anything. They walked through and it's all compliant now too, so. There was a misstatement in the paper.
One of the things that I might mention, I was part of the meetings with Mr. Bakhter. And one of the things that we had asked and what's in front of you on the screens was for him, you know, to really kind of provide the council with an opportunity to, to see how the operations of the facility would be operating to ensure that it would be in compliance with the, with the hotel regulations. And so those were some of the concerns that were addressed. That's some of the issues. And so some of the things that you see in this are things that I, that we told him that we felt it would be beneficial for him to put in writing to the council and he can certainly speak to that as well if you have any questions related to some of those things. But it was really, I think, wanting to make sure that from the operational standpoint that we don't end up in the same situation that we have in the past with this facility and ensuring that, that it's really truly operating like a hotel and not anything of an extended stay or, or of more of a permanent living place.
Council, you got any questions for him? Comments, questions?
Comment? I thought when we revoked this in December, that they were not gonna be able to come back or the same orders were not gonna be able to come back to reapply for a license on this.
No, they can, the owners, same owners could come back.
They had, I, I believe it was a period of, is it 90 days, Adrian?
Eighty days, yeah.
They had to wait 90 days before they could reapply for their license. So there was nothing that prevented them and, and Mr. Bakhter as the owner from reapplying.
I, I can speak to that a little bit. The options under the ordinance are to revoke a license, to not renew a license. The course that the council took was they decided not to renew the license. He was at the end of a period where it's his annual recertification or his annual license renewal that he has to do. And the council's decision at that time was to say, we're not renewing your license. And so there is the opportunity to return, but under the ordinance, he would have to wait 90 days before a new application could be submitted to the council. If the license had been revoked, then we'd be in a terrain where operation of the business wouldn't be available. Now, that was, that's the course of action that we took. So it is appropriate for there to be an application before the council. But no, there wasn't a revocation at that time. The previous revocation that was done was a 90-days revocation. You did essentially some version of a probation. He said, we want to get this thing in line. This is your chance to do that. And then they were given nine months to fall into compliance. And if not, then the council would have either done a vote to permanently revoke or to not renew, but the action that was taken in December was a non-renewal.
All right, council, got any questions or concerns? Either for any of the three?
If my question for him would be, what's gonna stop you from doing what you've been doing in the past?
As far as?
I mean, this is an ongoing affair we're having to shut you down so that you get up to.
Not only main problem, like we let one of the homeless family for a long term.
I'm asking you, what are you going to do to run the business the way we want you to run it under the license?
Well, we gonna enforce it now that nobody stays for long term like that anymore. We want to make sure because I don't want to keep coming here every year.
But this is the second time that this has happened.
Yeah, we had one guy before too that was in the other building. And then I had a lawsuit from him because he's thinking that we kick him out. And then he, we had a lawyer and say, you know, he don't have a choice but to let you go because the city didn't renew the license. Every time we try to tell somebody that you have to go, you have to go, we get the letter from the attorney, hey, you kicking him out. He's paying his money. He's not behind his rent. So now we're gonna put big sign with the, saying the city ordinance is the maximum you can stay in a room is seven days. So it's not the only thing.
But after the first time you got in trouble for that, wasn't that enough to tell you that?
The main trouble that was back then was my roof collapsed and that was, got a lot of water damage, more than half of my main building. That was a problem. At that time, there was no. Yeah, there was a guy staying there, but the main problem was the water damage to my building.
All right, anything else? Otherwise, I need a motion to either renew or not, or to deny to renew the license.
If I make, a question to you, if I make a motion to renew your license, don't let me regret it because I'll be.
Well, in my paper, I also, me and Mitch talk about it to have a meeting with you and Mr. Bantrude once a month with myself, Mitch, Mr. Bantrude, and go over the operation once a month. We're gonna fix one day like, okay, first Monday of the month or whatever day. We haven't picked it yet. We need to talk about it in our meeting.
All right, anything else?
If you want to view, there is someone in the chat that recognized item number two under there of a maximum seven-day stay. Guests must check out of one room and recheck into a different in the comment that was made. And I just want to recognize that, that that was done there so that you're aware of that.
All right, I need a motion one way or the other.
Hot.
One thing that I.
But I don't think we have a real good reason to deny him.
I do.
Well.
He's already, he's had two chances. You want to take three strikes, you're out, or what?
You, one thing that I.
Okay.
I could point out to you is that the license has to renew annually. And so, you know, if, and I'm not putting it, if you want to consider that, you have the option of having him come back and determine to see how things are at the end of the year. You know, whether it be November or December to determine, you know, how things are operating. So you do have that option if that's something that I just wanted to point out to you. It is completely up to you guys. I know that.
I'm gonna take that message from staff if they're really gonna meet once a month. We should get ample feedback, right? Between the chief and building inspection or Stearns County Health that everything is on the up and up. And if it's not, I would hope somebody would bring it up.
Still don't have a motion?
Oh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna help you out and make a motion to renew your license. Now, if I get a second, but with.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
I got a motion and a second. Is there any more discussion? I'm just not convinced that we should be sending our personnel over there every month to make sure that we hold your hand. So. Any other discussion?
Not either.
All in favor of renewing the license?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye. It's denied. I don't see any reason why we have to hold your hand and we've, we've seen this before. I, I don't know any other hotel that's got a sign posted up there that gives the directions that you have. That should have been just part of your, do you have that up in your other hotels?
Well, I'm already denied, so.
Yeah, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item B. Please search, please selection process. Police chief selection process.
Is anybody ready to make a motion? Or I will.
Go ahead.
I am going to move that we appoint Anthony Resnetek as Wake Park's next police chief.
I'll second that.
Can I just make sure?
Need to add that other language?
Just want you to, to make sure that you add. Just want you to ma- to make sure that you add, um, the move from pay grade, it's pay grade 13, step three. And then also, when you move to a department head level, the vacation, the vacation accrual go, starts at the same rate as a department head level, which is, you start off at the same level as a 10-years.
And I'll add that to the motion.
All right, and I got a second?
For me, yes.
Further discussion?
I would like to abstain from the voting.
You have to have a reason to abstain.
Why? Is he family? No, I'm asking Mike.
I, I'm, I just can't make up my mind, which way to go.
Well, it's been long enough, Mike.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And one abstention?
Yep.
Four to one, we have a new police chief.
Welcome.
Wherever Tony is. And it was a long process, it was a good process, and it was not an easy process, so. It was not an easy decision, we had some good candidates.
Yes.
All right.
But it's a good decision.
Yes, it's a good decision.
Item C, award bids for Fifth Street extension.
On me.
The other Dave.
Uh, so we bid Fifth Street extension for the purposes of XL Energy's new service center. Bids came in under, under budget, and that's a good news always. Again, direct paths, pass through cost paid by XL Energy, no cost to the city, so we extend their owed, they've already paid us. If we have extra when we're done, we'll give it back.
Perfect.
All right.
So we need a motion to approve awarding the bid to CNL.
That is correct, yes.
Exhibiting, do we need to say the dollar amount?
Let's go for it, sure.
What is it? Say it.
I have it up here.
I don't have it in front of me.
Uh, $359,326.90.
That's part of the motion.
I'll second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously.
Did you make the motion?
Sure.
Okay.
Item D, resolution to consider no mow May.
Mayor and council, uh, this has been a growing trend over the years, um, some of the neighboring cities have adopted a no mow May resolution. Uh, it basically, what it's saying is, um, trying to not mow your grass during the month of May, mainly for, for pollinators to be able to, um, grow and not be worried about getting damaged or killed. So, um, if the council would want to look at adopting this resolution for the month, if you don't want to mow and not meet the weed requirements of eight inches, you have to register through the city's website, so that we know who they are, um, because we will go out and inspect grass that's long, and if they're not registered, then we can cite them for that. All properties that would register for this, um, have to be back in compliance on June 1st. And then, again, city will go out and let, check yards and make sure that, uh, that they're in compliance with it. Uh, the other item with this is city, city properties, I'm proposing that we would not adopt that same policy for our city properties. Uh, we will still continue to mow the parks in what we do. Uh, in lieu of that, we are building pollinator gardens for ourselves, specifically around stormwater ponds and in river zeds, so. So that is my recommendation or offer for you guys to, to consider tonight. You can certainly ask me questions, um, and...
And if anybody wants to do it, we, we will have signs, so you can put it in your yards, so your neighbors don't think that you're not, that you're just ignoring your yard.
The only, the other thing that I might point out, I was actually approached by the Arbor Day Society, I think that's the right name. I know I'm getting, I don't have it in front of me, so, um, but there, Hank Schifels, who, uh, used to work for Stearns County, had approached us with that, um, and has been asking for this, so that's why it's before you today, um, for consideration.
All right, council, your wishes.
This is a catch 22. I don't like it, but if I don't do it, then I look bad too. Way I'm done.
So are you making a motion?
Um, no, I'm waiting for someone else.
I'll make a motion, second that motion.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously. Item E, Anderson Hughes video proposal.
I gotta get it up here for you. Um, if you recall, we started a contract last April with Anderson and Hughes to put a different variety of videos together. Um, we would like to continue to do this, they've been a good supporter for us in being able to get some messages across. And so their proposal is the same as what it would be last year, um, and so it'd be $2,500 a month for a total of the $30,000, and the recommendation would be to take that out of our cable franchise fees, because it are videos that we can utilize for our TV, for website, and other video, um, other social media sites as well. And I'll answer any questions or...
Anybody got any questions? We want to move to that?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously. Approved bills?
Move to pay the bills.
I'll second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously. I do have some thank yous for, from AmeriCorps, uh, senior RSVP for the donation that we gave to them in 2023, from charitable gambling. Also have one from Central Minnesota Mental Health Center, and also from, a thank you from Good Samaritan Fund.
Nice.
All right, and I have a resolution.
Proclamation?
Proclamation, I'm sorry, recognizing Celebrate Service Week. Whereas providing service to others is a trait of the American character, and whereas our nation's mayors are increasingly turning to service and volunteerism as a cost-effective strategy to meet city needs and challenges, and whereas serving others strengthens communities. Service participants serve in more than 60,000 locations across the country, including civic, neighborhood, and faith-based organizations, providing education, career skills, and leadership abilities for those who serve. And whereas service participants increase the impact of the organizations they serve with, both through direct service and by recruiting and managing millions of additional volunteers. And whereas service participants demonstrate commitment, dedication, and patriotism by making an intensive commitment to service, a commitment that remains with them in their future endeavors. And whereas AmeriCorps shares a priority with mayors nationwide to engage citizens, improve lives, and strengthens communities, and joins with the National League of Cities, City of Service Day, and mayors across the country to recognize the impact of service on Mayor's Day of Recognition for National Service. Whereas the St. Cloud area volunteer coordinators join in the mission to promote community awareness of volunteerism and develop the profession of volunteer management. SCAVC promotes National Volunteer Week throughout the greater St. Cloud area through its 27 organizational members. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Richard E. Miller, Mayor of the City of Wade Park, do hereby proclaim the week of April 16th to the 22nd, 2023 as Celebrate Service Week. All right, very nice. That's all I got. Shawna?
Uh, just a, uh, reminder that tomorrow morning, we'll meet here at 7:00 AM for our mobile workshop, where we're going to be heading to Detroit Lakes, and then off to Alexandria for tours of their public safety facilities.
Are we skipping the first meeting in May?
That, at this particular point, we really don't have any items that we need to.
Possibly then.
Right. And so at this point, that's, that was the plan. Um, if, I will certainly be in touch, but at this point, we don't have anything coming forward from, from, a lot of times, they get generated at the planning commission level and it, or park board, and we don't have any.
Hey, anybody else got anything? Dave? Bill? Nope. Other Dave? John? Chief? Paul?
Just a congratulations to Sergeant Resnachek.
Yes.
I do want to mention that there's somebody over there that's going to be retiring. And we do have a retirement party that we are starting to plan, um, the date, and I'm going to mess this up, Dave, the 18th, um, of May, and, um, it's going to be down at the, the Moose, uh, Dave has asked, because he's going to combine some of his own personal celebrations with ours, so we're going to work together to bring that, starting at 4:00 in the afternoon on, right? I believe so. The time will tell you. Three? Three to seven, okay. And the State of the City's address, in all its glory, will be at the Ledge Amphitheater. Um, this is an event that we have held for a number of years, this will be the second year that we'll be doing it at the Ledge, um, hosting it with Falcon National Bank, um, and that will be May, May 17th. And I believe that starts at about 11:00 to 1:00 is from the time. So lots of fun and exciting things going on.
All right, council, anything else?
I know.
All right, if not, we are adjourned at 7:09.